Carol, if you can call the room, please.
This is Mayor DeChee.
Here. I was not there. I was supposed to be waiting.
Councilmember Dan Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Salk.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Speed.
Here.
Mayor Chris Howley.
Here. Next, we'll go right into the approval of the minutes. Before we get into that, we have two sets of meeting minutes. The regular meeting, March 13, 2017, and then the agenda minutes for March 24, 2017. I have one correction. Unfortunately, it's on the signature page of the March 24th. If I said it, this was a misstatement. But I said that we met with Patty Hazelwood, Bo Watson, as well as representatives from Germantown and Bartlett. We did meet with Patty Hazelwood and Bo Watson and representatives from Bartlett. I actually spoke to folks from Germantown on the phone, so I said we met in the home hall. I'll correct that.
And who will make those minutes?
Other than that, are there any other amendments to the minutes? You say "none"? Approved? We're not above record?
No. But they are approved as amended.
Approved as amended. Next, we'll go right into citizens' opportunity to address the council, but I'm going to ask Doug, are you going to go first?
Oh, Doug, there. Believe it or not, my wife told me to keep my name out.
God bless her. Doug, I'm going to state your name and your address, and please keep your comments discreet.
Claire Ross, here at 48, Michigan. A couple of us went to the Walden Ridge Utility District, or WRUD, and were meeting in February with a water question, and were surprised to hear a board member talk about a project. Mayor Howley asked them to get a bid on it. A board member held up a drawing of Walden's Water Tower and what it would look like with the Signal Mountain mascot painted on it. This was the project he wanted the bid on. To summarize that request, the eagle, they wanted the eagle painted on the backside of the tower so spectators in the stadium could see it during the football games. And Signal told the board that the distance between the tower and the stadium was 2.3 miles, and the size of the eagle, 36 by 20 feet, or 720 square feet. The WRUD board member continued that the lowest bid that they received was $4,500, and that the council didn't support spending that amount, so ended discussion. But the project was brought up to the council for a discussion or a vote, or something else that I had never heard or aware of. And what bothers me looking at it is it doesn't seem to make any sense. When I look at the location, the water tower is visible just above the treetops, it's behind the stadium. So to see the tower, you would have to climb to the top of the stadium and look backwards if you're sitting there at a ballgame. And if you look at the distance, if you want to clearly see 720 square feet, the tower shouldn't be any farther than 3,000 or 4,000 feet away, which isn't a mile. And this tower is 2.3 miles from the stadium, you would have to look through binoculars to see it. And look at the illumination or light above it, the tower's not lit, and so you wouldn't be able to see it at night, and most of the football games are at night, after dark. So the project, to me, has nothing going for it, it's in the wrong location, the distance is too far away, it isn't lit. So in my opinion, the whole council should have been able to weigh in on this, and someone on the council might have come up with a location for the mascot, but the water tower, I don't think, was the answer. Thank you.
Are you sure you don't want to give it to a p- a pity? That's fine.
That had nothing to do with the council, though. It was a group of folks from the high school that were interested in getting that done, and it was going to be privately funded. We simply asked to make the contact and provide that information. It wasn't a town project at all.
Oh, I know this one. I listened to it the morning.
I can't agree with that.
In fact, he suggested maybe some town group or school group would like to get together and maybe they could fund it, since he said that the town said it costs too much.
I'm just telling you the fact of the matter is it was never a town project.
Never a town issue.
Well, all I'm saying is, you know, that's what he brought us, that it was brought to it.
And they might have confused the issue, because I had asked for a price. They might have said, well, because he asked for it, it's a town issue. It was never a town issue. It was never going to be funded by the town, never had anything to do with the town, had to do with the school.
Well, not letting the information that particular board member, then he was having this.
I apologize, we have bad information.
Again, I wasn't trying to argue that point, simply to state the fact that it was not a town project.
The board members think it was.
Would anybody else have to address anything?
Good evening, I'm Brendan Oliver from Bay 21, Cherokee Lane. This morning, I emailed to all of you, any of us, the number of attachments to it. The first is the attachments relating to remarks made in the meeting. And the second, I've heard attachments containing some proposals and changes to our parking ordinances to help make our streets safer. And then the last attachment was a photograph showing an example of one of the cops that was suspected. So there's a story to our being here this evening. Because of a complaint a resident made last year, our police department issued warning tickets to residents who would park their cars with two tires on the sidewalk in the inner block of Cherokee Lane last year. And as a result, people are now not parking with two tires on the sidewalk. And as a result, that's causing violations of another parking ordinance that actually is even more important. And that's the one that says you should not park your car in a manner that's not a traffic in any way. And when cars are parked without their wheels on the sidewalk, people driving down the street have to actually cross over the double yellow line quite a bit to get past them. In other words, these two ordinances conflict unless we do the appropriate thing, which is to make sure that the ordinance about instructing traffic is a law that always takes priority for our current citizens' parking ordinance section. As our town manager and I discussed in March, this is a problem that's not just limited to Cherokee Lane, it's also a problem in other parts of town. This parking behavior creates a great deal of additional risk for the town's families and the children. When you're driving down the street and there's cars parked in the street, you can't see children that may be playing in their yards and then dash out after a wall from behind a car. And so someone driving down the street, even if they're going 2 miles an hour, they're on time to stop because no one chanced there. Most two-way streets in Chattanooga where parking on the street is permitted are 38 feet wide, so you've got 19 feet between the sidewalk and the curb. That allows 8 feet for the parked car next to the curb, and then 11 feet for cars to drive by. The average car, this is the full-size car, is more pushing 70 watt. And if you park within 18 inches to the curb, on the map, it's very clear that we've got an issue about safety control, pedestrians, and traffic on the street. As I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, I've prepared some suggested improvements and revisions to our parking ordinances that are intended to address this problem, making this clearer about what is permitted and what isn't permitted to this type of parking. And one of the things that those suggested changes include is the requirement that people park in a direction of traffic, right, facing traffic, unindividued, evening, walking on the street, or anything. Shouldn't happen, cars are parked facing the wrong way. Even if you choose not to make any of these changes, I have a request for the town council to act against the police department to, on a regular basis, enforce the ordinance about not parking in areas where there's traffic. And also equally important, that the ordinance 15971 regarding parking of camping trailers also should be enforced. Parking of camping trailers is only supposed to take place behind the front line of the house, inside yard, or the backyard house. And on a regular basis, on Cherokee Lane and on Signal Road, from time to time, and for a couple of days in the specialties, trailers are parked right next to the street, and you can't see through them, you can't see around them. And so if you are pulling out of the driveway and there's a trailer there, you can't see them coming, traffic, and do your nose out in the street. And the implications from a public safety perspective are obvious. Thank you very much for your attention to this important matter. If any of you'd like to discuss it, or change that email to you earlier today, I'd be happy to discuss them with you now or later.
Do we want to discuss this now? First, I want to recognize you, you were a Pat's council member, weren't you?
I was, and I also served on the fire commission.
I want to thank you for your service to the town first.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for yours.
Can you tell me, what would you like to do? Well, I'm not sure that we can take it to an end point, but it seemed like this is a more of a discussion.
Can we take a, can we just take a seat? How backed up can you do with the Reddick and the Chief?
Can we make this an item on our agenda meetings at the end of the month, so we can more address it there? We can make it, to get some input from everybody to address it at that point.
Well, may I make your question off this line?
Absolutely.
The agenda meetings are at 12:30 on Fridays.
Yes, sir.
Last Friday of the month. Would it be possible to have a discussion at the next regular Monday meeting, collecting attendance?
We may have some discussion on it during that agenda meeting, would that bother you if we did? All right. I mean, I'd like to get a better understanding of it. The examples that you provided as attachments, the pictures.
Yeah.
And I guess the situation in general, is it an occurrence on occasion, or is it something that happens continuously? And I'm just at the safety aspect of the, but what is the frequency, I guess, of when it occurs, or do you have people that just simply, I guess, take advantage?
Okay, well, with respect to parking on the street with the wheels next to the sidewalk, they're supposed to be on the sidewalk, obviously they're not on the center line. It's every, every, in the block, and then the block a little bit.
Do those councils have side driveways?
Yes, they do.
Okay, but they choose not to use them.
That's right.
Obviously.
And the other violation that happens from time to time, that I have heard on Signal Road as well, on Cherokee Lane, is from time to time, a camping trailer will be parked in the driveway in front of the house for several hours, two, several days, I don't know, say a week. And what I proposed in the suggested provisions to the recreational vehicles section of 15971 is to take out the discretionary fees about the town manager being able to grant. Exceptions, because it's a team we agree, all the owners of the camper, they get an exception once, and they've got permission to do it anytime they want, and they do it all. Our ordinance enforcement officer, Chuck Martin, is a really, especially, good job, but they'll be booing you up here. It's a bit too much to ask him to pretend to be proud of where camping trailers park in some of the front line of the house on a regular basis.
Could be Chuck, or the police department could push it?
Well, actually, these traffic ordinance is our, not a police department enforcement issue, is anything else.
Those would be the part of the police department, the parking of the recreational vehicle could follow with the code as well, but.
Well, you know, the RE's provision about where you can park your RV is actually in the parking ordinance section, so where it where it is in, that's where you have the police department.
So the practice of parking with two wheels up on the sidewalk, how did that come to be acceptable? Do you have any idea?
Well, and where the streets became so narrow, it actually was a better thing to have people parking with half the car on the sidewalk, because then cars wouldn't have to cross the center line.
Then nobody affected their car on the sidewalk?
Exactly.
Really? Okay.
I'm telling a new resident who did, and she doesn't like cars parked on the sidewalk, made a complaint with the police department, and the police department did a physical supersize enforcement ordinance. The challenges, the parking ordinance, has to be viewed as a whole, one of its own sections.
It's unlikely we're heading in that direction. Maybe we could. Tell people to park on the sidewalk.
No, I shouldn't say so, but, you know. I'm order of the points for is if people should be parking at the sidewalk. And that's fine with me, that's what we do.
I mean, there was similar problems taking place on Carolina, and for, I don't know if the police were ever called, neighbors started putting stickers all over the car, asking them kindly, "Please park in the roadway." And that's what ended up solving that one. And I just, in this case, if these people would ask that, could they park in the roadway, please?
Well, it'd be slightly, a concerted group of residents would struggle.
It doesn't always work.
I'm not optimistic.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So we talked about that. Just wondering, do all places fall in that category? I gotta complain about a school question. There's another section.
What is going on?
It's been there forever. But that's in the drawing.
It's in the drawing, front of the house.
We talked about it, it's been parked, it has been parked. He's probably on mine. Moving to the ordinance. Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the council? All right, say no one else, move on. Move on to resolutions, and this is a fun one. This is one we left here. And I see now that the judge is here, and I was going to have to move it to the end there, but we've got a chain of audience, and welcome. I'd also like to recognize Tracy Cox, who's our new town judge, thank you for being here. Resolution number 2017-16, a resolution recognizing and honoring Judge Mark Roffler for his many years of service as a town judge for the town of Signal Mountain. I'd like to read the entire resolution. Whereas Mark Roffler was appointed to the position of town judge in September of 1996 on the resignation of Judge Batman, and whereas Judge Roffler sought and won election to that position in November 1996, and whereas Judge Roffler sought and won reelection to that position in 1998, 2006, and 2014, and whereas Judge Roffler has faithfully served the citizens of Signal Mountain for more than 20 years, and whereas Judge Roffler has now retired from his position as town judge. Now, therefore, we have resolved that the town council of the town of Signal Mountain, Tennessee recognizes and honors Judge Mark Roffler for his many years of service to this community as a Signal Mountain town judge, and extend their very best wishes for his retirement and all future endeavors. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything first?
Thank you very much, and I'm enjoying my tenure, and I'm glad to be here.
Yes, I think I voted for somebody to make a motion. All those in favor? Aye. Let's give you this, and Mike, your picture too. Yes. Please. You want to say anything for a picture?
Dan, you want to move in just a little bit closer?
It's present.
All right, then, maybe just a bit, just to kind of sit and get an eye on it. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Again, thank you, sir, for my years, that's a lot of service, thank you. All right, moving on, our next item is appointment of Rita Urban to the Unification Committee. Resolution 20 Rita Urban as a member of the Resolution Number 2017.
Oh, it's 2017-17.
Resolution number 2017-17, Resolution 20 Rita Urban is a member of the Signal Mountain Unification Subcommittee of the Town of Signal Mountain Citizens Advisory Committee. I'll move for a group. For the first or second, is there any discussion?
Rita's awesome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? She will break, we have great. She's not here, but she's going to break. Excellent. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2017-18, which is Resolution authorizing the town manager to purchase five semi-automatic calculators from Fiso Control Inc. Did I get that right? Physio. Physio Control Inc. of Redmond, Washington, for a amount not to exceed $14,000, as the best bid for semi-automatic calculators to be used by the fire department for the town of Signal Mountain. These are five that are replacing calculators that are 10 years old, if I'm not mistaken.
And if I might, I would only point out that we received two, only two bids on these. The other bid was considerably lower, but took seven exceptions to the specifications and did not even close to the team what we needed. So this is a higher bid, but it does meet all the specifications, and it did come in under the amount we had booked.
Do you want to have a discussion before we make a motion? Let's get a motion, and then we open up the discussion. Motion is set. We'll move for a group, a second. All right, discussion, Dan. I wonder, is there a reason why we don't phase these in like these police cars, so that they don't all run out at the same time? If they do have a lifespan.
They do, and one of the main reasons is compatibility. We, they need to be all alike, because of the different, they all use different kinds of pads, and so we, it really wouldn't be a good idea to have several different kinds of machines using different kinds of pads.
Does that technology change every year?
About every five years. For the 80s, the technology changed by the time the ones that were replaced, they were replaced. And this is the newest technology of the line right now, so.
To Dan's point, though, could we bid them by your contract, so we could replace them over the years, or that way you've got the same company, same, theoretically, same?
He, maybe, like this model, you know, they've operated for about the last five years, but usually about every five years, they change models and different things.
This is also semi-automatic?
Yes.
The ones that the shares company's been buying are now fully automatic, where you don't, so that technology can change, and Zoll may get, you know, may go with that instead of physical control.
Yeah, Zoll's the other bidder, and they did what I would call a sumo model. It wasn't, it wasn't, the model wasn't made for emergency services, so I don't find they did that one, but they did.
I don't want to belabor the point, but what's the difference between some of the things you wanted, I was going to ask, is automatic?
Semi-automatic, you actually physically push the button to shock. Automatic just doesn't.
So this is being used by our emergency personnel to know when to have a shock?
Right, and these are, they shock at different rates, and these are field adjustable, so the automatic ones, they shock at a certain rate every time, and you can do two rounds of shocks, and then they stop. You have to physically shut the machine off, turn the machine back on, and reduce these, you can actually, depending on the protocols for the event, you can actually adjust these in the field, so they're a little more suited.
So if you're on the third shock, and I'm receiving any, probably, how much would I have to shut off the machine? So we're line five, with two.
All the reserves, and our pickup two.
And the pickup, okay. So they're all mounted for mobile, so they're not stationary?
Yeah, they're different cases, so.
And to clarify, this was under budget, but it was not, this is not one of our brand programs?
Right, no, this is budgeted, and it doesn't mean under budget.
Dan, I'm sorry, I don't have time for questions, go ahead. Anyone else, any other comments? You ready to roll? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next, we have Resolution 2017-19. Resolution authorizing the distribution of the town of Signal Mountain water company in lieu of add more in tax payments on property of public works within the town for the water system for fiscal year 2016, 2017, in the sum of $24,850. Oh, we can't, it's quick.
Tennessee law allows that municipally-owned water utility can be charged in lieu of tax amounts to the town. Basically, we own and operate the water utility, but those funds are strictly segregated. So acknowledging that the town, as a body, has cost expenses and oversight of that utility, we can charge the water fund these in lieu of tax amounts to compensate the town for what it does in operation of the utility. It's something we've done, I think this is the third, fourth year now, so it is our practice as of last.
Standard operating procedure.
And it's calculated each year on the, the property, that's not the property of the utility.
Is that the newest, is this the newest asset, or is that?
Yes, this is the.
Most recent?
The water lines, the inventory, all of that, it's not. The water lines, the inventory, all of that. It's not necessarily, most of the land associated with the water department is in the name of the town. So this is the infrastructure and property such as that.
Can I get a motion? Second? Second?
Through the second?
Second, please. All right, we have the first and the second. Is there questions, discussion? Anyone? If not, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next, we'll move on to ordinances. Having it up, we'll move right on to discussion. While we go down, we're on the table here. Dan, would you like to start? Any items for discussion? Anything?
We have the committee, we're gonna be setting up seven meetings with seven lifestyle groups in the next seven weeks, so hopefully we'll get you some more information about feedback from all those seven groups, and that's all.
Let me see, Centennial? I felt a little bit hurt. Yeah, yeah. I don't know if this is the place to bring it, but since you brought that, if you don't mind, I can tell you this one. I just got this idea in the back of my head about using those rails that we're gonna take out of, out of the James Bullock project or something. And it just seems like it's good raw material for some kind of creative activity associated with this agenda. And I just want to keep that idea in front of you and the committee, and see if it turns into anything.
I think that's in play. I can tell you how far it's gone beyond that, but it's something that is gonna be done. I don't know what end you're going to be.
Yeah, it just seems like it's just good enough to continue to pass up. I will see, thank you, appreciate it. Can I have one thing, Mr. Centennial? Cheekwings?
Yes.
Have they contacted you about photography?
No, sir.
So I know that Kyrang is looking for good photography from around Signal Mountain to help them with the website, so... Do we know anybody?
That would be you, sir.
Anybody?
I'd be glad to help, if I can help any way.
Any others?
I don't know if it was said at a regular meeting, but I think it should be said again, commending Dr. Spalding on his efforts for Sparkle Day. We had a second, I think, I don't think we've had regular meetings since, and I know we talked about it in the agenda meeting, but what a great job to pull that off two years in a row, and what a great activity for everybody to be involved in.
Thank you. I was hoping that we could weigh in with Tracy on some options on helping to keep the town clean, Judge Cox, if there's any opportunity to do community service, that that would be something to consider.
Wow, great.
Did you hear that?
I did hear that.
All right. With that being said, this is a meeting that all time record, but we were here, and I liked it.